All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting at 7:00 PM. I am Lauren Christensen, Vice President. I'm going to ask for my fellow board members to introduce themselves as well.
Well, welcome, everybody. I'm Sherona Paccari.
I'm Patty McQueen. Thanks for being here. Fun fact, it's Pi Day.
Patrick Keough, thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you for joining us tonight. I'm Judy Westra.
Okay. Dr. Merrick, can you introduce yourself and your team?
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson. We thank her always for being here and taking such great minutes for our community members that cannot be here, like the remaining members of the team, to introduce themselves, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Thank you, Dr. Merrick. Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing. I want to give a special shout out to all the students from Mr. Chris's route.
Good evening, I'm Participants Assistant Superintendent for Student Services.
Hi, I'm WPS. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. Thanks for being here tonight.
Welcome. I'm Shante Langford, the Chief Human Resource Officer.
Good evening, Liz Vertania Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent, Student and Family Engagement.
Okay, can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I would love to ask for the students in the room to help lead us with the pledge, please. Ready?
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please have a motion to adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda?
Madam Vice President, I move that we adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda, action number 230361.
Can we get a second? Okay, so it was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member Paccari. Dr. Merrick, can you take us through the agenda, please?
Thank you, Vice President Christensen. This evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions. Since our last time together, we are still hiring champions for our students, and we're so pleased to welcome you to the district. We also have leaves and resignations, as well as retirements for your consideration. We have the approval of minutes from our regular meeting, that's on February the 28th, 2023, and finally, we have some out-of-country field trips for your consideration.
Okay, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. A motion passes, what is this, 5-0? We're missing a couple here today. Okay, Ms. Langford, can you take us through human resources?
Yes, thank you, Vice President Christensen. Tonight, we have two new hires. I believe that one person could not be with us, but when I call your name, if you don't mind standing up so that you can be recognized. We have Shannon Robinson, who's an early-on service provider for us with Allen. I believe she's absent this evening, but she has her BA from Central Michigan, and again, she's going to be an early-on service provider at Allen Elementary, so happy to have her. And Jill Thompson, is she here, Jill? There she is. Jill is a special ed teacher for our post-secondary ed, our Plymouth Golds program. Jill has her BA from Eastern Michigan University and her master's from the University of Michigan, so welcome, Ms. Thompson. And then this evening, we do have one retirement that we want to acknowledge. We have Cynthia Bartlett. She is a life management teacher at Salem. She has been with us since August 31st of 1999, and she is going to be retiring effective June 15th of this year, so we'd just like to thank her for her service. I know that that is a hard position to fill, so we will get busy on that, but again, we just want to thank Ms. Bartlett for her services. That concludes the human resource portion.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to celebrating success with Member Paccari.
We are celebrating success this evening to honor Mr. Chris Higginbotham.
Thank you.
Did I say it?
Thank you so much.
He is a PCCS bus driver, and for going above and beyond for the students on his route. Mr. Higginbotham has created a safe and fun environment on his bus, particularly on his elementary route to Gallimore. Parents from his route have noted that Mr. Higginbotham really takes the time to get to know the students on his route, talks to them about their interests, and makes them laugh. That's good. Which has resulted in the formation of a special community within the bus. This community has proved to be very important to students and their families, especially at the beginning of the school year, when third-grade students are moving into Gallimore for the first year. Mr. Chris helps the students feel comfortable and confident, and the bus rides to and from school have quickly become one of their favorite parts of the day. So I would like to invite Ms. Katie Bennett, Ms. Amanda Crinkie, and Ms. Rema Sethi, parents from Mr. Higginbotham's route, to the podium to share more about the impact that, excuse me, that Mr. Higginbotham has had on their students.
Just have to read it. You don't even have to memorize it. Just read it.
Normally, normally, on a bus ride, you would look forward to getting home or getting to school, but Mr. Chris makes the bus rides fun. He also lets us call him Fishstick. Thank you, Mr. Chris.
I just want to echo her statement. We cannot be more thankful for what you've done to our, for our children.
Okay, so we're so excited and grateful to be here tonight to celebrate the best bus driver ever, Mr. Chris Higginbotham, also known as Fishstick.
Thank you for acknowledging him, and most importantly, thank you, Mr. Chris. To say you make a difference is an understatement. You go above and beyond to ensure our kids have an extraordinary school experience that they'll never forget. Um, I don't know why I'm crying. It's like such an impact that I don't think people realize, but to know that your kids are getting such a positive, like, start of their day and to the day, like, means so much, especially for the last, like, couple of years, which have been, like, kind of hard for kids. Anyway, so like we said, you've built a community on 94P, and as a parent, we can't adequately express, like, how grateful we really are. And, thank you. Thank you so much. For one thing, for people that don't know, at the end of the year for fifth graders, like, he wrote every fifth grader, like, an individual, like, letter, like, wishing them best for, like, the future, and just, like, positive things about them that was just incredible, and, like, beyond what I think my child has gotten from even, like, in a classroom. So the fact that he can do that on the bus ride to and from school is just beyond, so thank you.
I have nothing to add to that, other than just to say, I mean, I think I've already said enough, but I think a lot of people forget, and I didn't even know, because I had walkers before they went to Gallimore, that the school doesn't, the school day doesn't start when these kids walk in the building. It starts when they get on that bus every day, and I couldn't be any more thankful from the day that I sent, that first day of third grade, that first day for Jack, that, like, to see Mr. Chris's smile, I mean, you see it right now, like, he lights up their day every single day, and I think, like, the fact that he lights them up in the morning, and he lights them up as they walk off, is just incredible for them every single school day. And I know in 20 years, my kids are going to be like, oh, yeah, I remember Mr. Fishstick, like, it's going to be something they will remember forever. And so, to you, forever and ever, thank you so much, Chris.
Watch, come on up, come on up. So, on behalf of the Board of Education, I present Mr. Fishstick, Mr. Chris, Mr. Higginbotham, with the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Mile Award for going the extra mile. So, thank you so much. There you go. And here it is. Can I open it? All right, so thank you. And do you want to say anything about this, or would you like to speak? Tell us how you got Fishstick.
Someone cut an onion today, and it's residual odor is affecting us all, I can see. So, the first point, Fishstick came from that one and her accomplice, Gwen Abramson, and I have no idea why. It's just stuck. I was trying to give them nicknames, they forced one on me. Had no choice. If I could say one thing, is that... The onion. I do this, I'm trying to be an outgoing, inquisitive person, to try to get to know these kids, because I had a student lose a battle that I could have seen coming, happened out of nowhere. Her name was Jillian Pondell, and, um, onion. I try to do this memory of her, to try to get to know these kids, instead of just being the, a casual person, the first adult that they see leaving out the door, and the last one they see too, just try to getting to know them, and to give them a little joy, as much as they given me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for what you shared.
I don't know why he's sitting down. Mr. Brandon wants pictures. And the fan club. Dr. Liz, did you go someplace good?
I did. I was in the Bahamas area.
I mean, the Bahamas.
Yeah.
I thought all these people came for our meeting.
I know.
I gotta say, though, a good bus driver, that starts the day off.
Right.
It does.
Well, that was certainly a heartwarming presentation, and I know, as board members, we love to present the Extra Miler Award to folks, and certainly, Mr. Fishstick, as I will call him, was deserving of the award. So, we're going to move on to the Board Committee Reports in Action. First off is the President's Report, and as you are all well aware, Sean is not here today, and I do want to say a few words about that. He recently lost his father, so he is tending to some family business, and I want to say, on behalf of the Board, and as well as the Administration, that our condolences go out to Mr. Wilson and his family, and, you know, hugs and, you know, everything to them, but he will be back soon. But as a part of the President's Report, it's going to be a little bit abbreviated, but we do have a special guest that I would love to invite up to the podium to make a little statement as to what's going on legislatively. We have US House, excuse me, State Representative Matt Colizar.
Thank you, and I only need, like, 25 minutes, half hour, so be nice and brief.
Fantastic.
First of all, it's good to see everybody. Thank you for having me. I also want to do a quick shout out to the kindergartners, first graders, and second graders at Isbister. It was a lot of fun to read to them last Friday, and I will be headed over to Farren Elementary this Friday to read to second graders. One class is my niece's class, and then, going to read across the hall, too. We're going to see, I surprise them every year, and I'm wondering how long it's going to take before my niece is not surprised anymore. I don't think she knows this year. So, a lot going on in Lansing. First of all, I am the House Education Chair this term, so a lot of work that I'm looking forward to doing with my background as a teacher. It's obviously something I've always wanted to do. Let's start with what we already did do. We already passed through the Senate and the House. It was a Senator Paul Hanke's bill, which eliminates the retention piece, the retention requirement in the third-grade reading law. So that is already, it's sitting on the Governor's desk right now, so I anticipate that being signed any day. Next, we took testimony this morning on my bill, which would repeal Michigan's A through F law on schools. If you're not familiar, it's basically, it would grade schools A through F based on various metrics, mainly around standardized testing. We already have what's called the State Index System, which uses testing, but uses some other factors as well. The A through F came in during lame duck 2018. It is a very duplicative system with the State Index System, but the biggest problem with A through F is it does not meet federal standards, whereas the State Index System does. So it is a major, for lack of a better word, waste of time, energy, taxpayer dollars, when we already have a different system that we can use. So, that bill is my bill to repeal A through F. We did testimony on it today. I anticipate a vote next week, and then it'll be onto the House floor and onto the Senate. It did enjoy a lot of popular support amongst various school groups, including Wayne RISA, school administrators, Michigan Association of School Boards, Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals, the MEA. So it enjoyed a lot of support with our school groups, which I was happy to see. Oakland Schools, there was another one, I forgot, that's supported today. So we had that. Other things we are working on right now, one is the issue of reciprocity for teachers. This is a big one that comes up. So, we do have some bills that are over in the Senate right now that were testimony today, and will be coming over to the House soon, which would make it so teachers with out-of-state certs could teach in Michigan without having to take the MTTC, as long as they have three successful years of teaching experience. Now, in addition to that, I'm going to be offering a bill. We had some school districts in the state that would have a teacher, an out-of-state teacher's permit lapse, and nobody caught it, so it was a clerical error. This is over the last couple of years, so it goes back to the 21, 22 school year, where what would happen is they'd have a teacher's permit would lapse, because maybe they were having trouble passing the MTTC, because maybe they hadn't taken that test, or a test like that, in 20, 25 years. And school districts were getting dinged into the tens of thousands of dollars, or in the case of one school district, $250,000. I think it's fair to say, we shouldn't be popping our school districts for these major fines for a clerical error, when they could have taken that teacher on an expired permit out, put virtually anybody in at the time, as long as they were employed by the school district, and not been fined. Seems silly to me, so we're going to hold those schools harmless, and again, save some taxpayer dollars, and make sure they're going into the schools, into kids, and not just for these fines. So we're working on that. The big one that is consuming my life, the nine-month sit-out period for retirees. We are working with the Office of Retirement Services to try to come up with a solution so our coaches can still coach, our subs can still sub, and our club advisors can still advise. I think we are nearing a solution, but it takes time. ORS, very responsibly, is trying to make sure they don't hurt the status of the MIPSers system. They don't, they, it's making sure we don't upset the IRS, because you need bona fide termination when you retire. So we're working through those issues, but I think we're going to have something, because I'm hearing about stories all around the state, of retirees saying, I'm not coming back to coach, to advise, to do anything in the fall, because I don't want to hurt my pension. We want to make sure they have that option without hurting their pension. Substitute teaching, about expanding it down to what it was last year, I know there is a demand for that. That one's going to be coming very soon, about the idea of anybody that's employed by the school, especially in those emergency situations where we can't find subs, because we know we have a massive shortage. Let's get to the funding part. We are working on this. We are aiming towards the Governor's recommendation of a 5% increase in the foundation allowance, which is roughly $450 per pupil, give or take a little bit. So that's exciting. We are also working on increased funding for special education and at-risk students across the board, looking at increased funding for GSRP to be able to fully have universal pre-K as well. And we are also looking at funding, if you think that during COVID, when we had the Meals for All, actually funding that at the state level, just we discovered how much it is, and we can do this, where we are actually, but the big thing we're focusing on is making sure these are nutritious meals for the kids as well. So we're looking at that as well. So that's the education scope of everything. Now, some bills, just to give you a more legislative scope of things that we have done already, there's three big things. The first one was the repeal of the pension tax and the expansion of the earned income tax credit, to put money back in families' pockets. One that is important to do distinction, we did repeal a right to work in the House, and it was repealed in the Senate today. Keep in mind, that does not affect public sector workers. However, there was a provision in the bill called, we call it the Janus trigger, where the Janus decision is what makes that, so it doesn't affect public sector workers. If Janus were to ever be overturned, then, then yes, the right to work repeal would affect public sector workers, but only in the event someday, if it ever happened, that Janus were to be overturned. And finally, last week, we expanded the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act to include the LGBTQ community. So, that in a nutshell is everything we've been, from the education standpoint, and overall, what we've been working on. I'd be happy to answer any questions if board members have them. Or was I that thorough?
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
For the breakfast, to feed all the students with breakfast, from what, some of the things I've heard and seen with the COVID, during COVID, when all the kids got lunches, there was a lot of times they would end up in the garbage, or they would take them home, and so is there, you know, have they looked into, like, would that really be a need, or would kids really want that, or would there be a lot of waste?
So I think, in terms of where kids really, or where families want it, there are certain communities that have asked for it more than others. Obviously, we don't want food to end up in the garbage. The biggest thing we are trying to focus on is quality of food, to make sure they're getting good quality food. I always used to use the reference, you know, when it comes down to this, let's play it safe. I knew for, I stopped celebrating snow days when I was a teacher, for example, because I knew I had certain kids in the building that were not going to eat that day, maybe a bag of Doritos if they were lucky. And so, ensuring that every child is fed, I think is important. Obviously, we don't want to see food end up in the trash, but there's still a lot of talk about what this is going to look like. It's still in very early conversations. We actually, I can ask that question tomorrow, because, or Thursday, because in the School Aid Subcommittee, we are actually taking up testimony on Meals for All, and what that looks like, so I'd be happy to ask that question on your behalf.
Because there would always be a lot of students that probably would not opt in for that, or, you know, maybe an opt-in or opt-out, so that you wouldn't have the wastage?
I will say this-
You know, because not everybody's going to come and eat.
And I know a lot of kids take the food home, and maybe they snack on it later, and I know that's what my niece did. When she was getting the meal, she'd bring it home and snack on it. She would still eat it, but it might not be till that evening or something. But, no, I'd be interested to see what they want this plan to look at, and it's still in kind of the baby stages, but I'll actually be learning a lot more about it in about 48 hours.
Any other questions?
Matt, excited to hear that the House is following the Governor's recommendation on the budget. What have you heard from your colleagues at the Senate?
Also following the rec, we're doing everything we can to make sure this works out, and that we do have, hopefully, a 5% increase in the foundation allowance. That is the target that we all want to hit. I think the other thing we really want to hit is making sure we have pre-K for all.
Okay.
That's a big deal, especially in terms of literacy. Every study in the world has shown, if you get kids engaged at a younger age, they will thrive later on, so this is a big deal if we get this done.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Any chance, given the consensus that we're hearing across the three branches here, or the three units of government, is there any chance that you'll have this done before June 30th, so that we, as a school board, that have to vote on our budget on June 30th?
I will say, I am optimistic. I can't speak for the entire House, but I, you know, I'm going to say, I think we will. I genuinely do. And, at least, God, I hope so. But, no, I genuinely think that we will. I think there's a lot of good conversations going on that are very much in good faith, and I think that that target is very, very realistic.
Thank you, and thank you for being a supporter of public education.
Of course, thank you.
Could I ask one thing? For the pre-K, is that for, would that be something required, like, having kindergarten, first grade, or is that just something an option people would come into?
So, what's interesting is, in addition to the pre-K, the idea is for it being available to all, but if we're ever going to go further and start, first of all, we don't have it available for pre-K, but the thing is, you, kindergarten is not mandated in the state of Michigan right now.
Right, right.
So we are working on, I know there's a rep out of Warren that is actually working on a bill that would mandate kindergarten. So you can't pre-K, because right now, you can't mandate kindergarten. So, at least getting that conversation started. Obviously, I think just about every kid in the state goes to kindergarten these days, but making that mandatory is what we're working on first. So, I know that that bill is being worked on, but it is not ready yet, because the issue is, you also have to discern between that and young fives, and making sure you're not hurting the young fives population. So there's a lot of work that goes into that.
And would that be a half-day, full-day, or optional?
I'd have to talk to the bill sponsor. She's the one working on it.
Share a coin. Third question?
Oh, so just, for people that don't know, because I read the minutes of your committee meetings, could you, like, remind people about how many educators you now have on your education committee that you chair?
Okay, so, I'm just going to go through this in my head. You've got myself as one, my vice chair, Jamie Churches, is two. She was a teacher down at Groseal for 11 years, I believe, 10 or 11 years. Regina Weiss, who's on the committee and is also the School Aid Chair, she taught in Detroit Public Community School District. We have Dylan Wigella, who was a teacher in Dearborn. We have, on the other side of the aisle, Greg Markkinen, who is an administrator and teacher up in the UP. I know I'm forgetting when, I'm going to feel really bad about it. Oh, we have Nate Shannon, who is, he was a teacher in Sterling Heights, and we have Lori Stone, who was a teacher at Fitzgerald Public School. So you have seven educators, oh, and Brad Bicquet, who taught Niles. There's eight. Eight educators on a 14-member committee is, it's over half the committees.
And one other question, is we try to do a good job with our acronyms here. Can you talk about what GSRP is, just so those in the audience-
Great Start Readiness Program.
Thank you.
Okay, no more questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me tonight. Appreciate it.
Okay, on to Student Performance and Achievement Committee. Actually, Member Soodoo is not here. I don't know of anyone else. Okay, Member Westra, do you want to report out, please?
Okay, so we met in this room last week. The things that we covered were, we had a discussion on equity in athletics and activities as a committee as a whole. Everybody in the, everybody on the board attended. Was discussion and presentation. We're going to have a deeper discussion today, at the end of the meeting, to talk more about what equity in athletics and activities look like, and what kind of rubric we would want to give to the, to the athletic directors. We also discussed an out-of-country field trip that will be on tonight's agenda, and we discussed a new AP Biology textbook, which, again, will be on tonight's agenda. And then, our next meeting is April 5th at 5:00 PM in this room. It's open to all, and we hope to see you all attend. Thank you.
President Christensen, I hate to interrupt. I just want to remind all speakers to speak directly in your microphones. We're having a little bit of a hard time with levels tonight.
Okay.
So please, if you can speak directly in our microphones, that'd be great. Thank you.
Pull the mic closer to you.
Thank you for that reminder.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the Policy Committee with Member McCoy.
So we have not met since our last meeting, because we generally meet at the second meeting of the month, because we do not have another meeting in March. We will not be meeting until April 25th, which is down the collaboration space, where we will be continuing our, our look at Section 5000, which relates to students, as we work our way through all of our policies in the next couple of years. Everyone, of course, is welcome to join us.
Thank you, Member McCoy. On to Finance and Operations Committee with Member Keough.
So, Finance and Operations Committee met last Thursday, March 9th, 5:00 PM, here in this room. Some of the folks here in this audience were there at that time, so we really welcome the community when they come out. We reviewed some of the 2020 bond projects, in particular, some of the plans, early plans that are happening at the PSEP campus and the new stadium and Phase 3 renovations that are being considered. Those will come up on a subsequent meeting when they actually go out to bid, but they're not actually, we're just getting early looks at that as we deal with budget overruns and some of the other things that can be done to support that particular process. We also reviewed some of the tree recommendations as part of the Smith Elementary School remodeling, and the work that we can do to support the community members in that process. We discussed two items that are up on the agenda this evening. One is purchase of maintenance vehicles. That's a replacement of some maintenance vehicles that we have, and taking advantage of availability of those, and to support the work that we're doing. And then, the community budget survey results. We'll have a presentation at the end of tonight to talk about that. And our next FNO meeting is Thursday, April 6th, 5:00 PM, here in this room, and again, we welcome the community to attend.
Thank you, Treasurer Keough. On to Student Voice and Action Committee. Mr. Wilson is not here, but we have a student member who can share out on that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Josh Patterson, and I'm an SVA member, as well as a Plymouth freshman. Happy Pi Day as well. At yesterday's SVA committee meeting, we broke into our subcommittees. That's not the right slideshow. No, like, it's not the right slides.
That was February 13th, so I think it was the wrong date.
It's all good. I don't, you know. If you could find it, that'd be great, but it's all good. At yesterday's SVA committee meeting, we broke into our subcommittees. As a refresher, those include establishing meeting norms, creating our student- As a refresher, those include establishing meeting norms, creating our student agenda, establishing the request for service process and timeline regarding the consultant to aid in SVA, and establishing the co-chair process and associated timeline. During our subcommittee group time, the subcommittees worked to further the agenda. First up, the RFS, a Request for Service Process and Timeline Subcommittee, worked to inter, to create interview questions for the new SVA consultant interviewees, as well as determining the hour, the required hours for this position, which would be around 50 to 60 hours. Next up, we have the Subcommittee focusing on establishing meeting norms. We worked to research, nice, research communication and sharing tools to help SVA. We plan to create videos on how to use these platforms. Lastly, the Subcommittee is working on creating a poster for SVA. On to the Co-Chair Process/Timeline Subcommittee. The Subcommittee established the rubric for the co-chair interview process. It was also determined that the seniors, seniors could not apply for the co-chair position due to the fact they are about to graduate. Elections for the co-chair are currently planned to be held next month. Lastly, we have the Subcommittee focusing on, oh, man, it's all messed up. Lastly, we have the Subcommittee focusing on creating, wait, where am I? We then came back together from our Subcommittee groups. We went on to discuss what a license role would look like, and if it was necessary, these license would attend other board committee meetings such as FNO or Finance and Operations, SPA or Student Performance and Achievement, and the Policy Committee. Most importantly, we discussed snacks and food, because what is the best Subcommittee without food? The decision to continue with having pizza at the meetings was also made. Our next formal SVA meeting will be on April 10th at 6:00 PM in Canton High School, Room 201. I hope to see you there. Happy Pi Day, and clearly, we only think about food at SVA.
Thank you for your thorough report, Josh. Okay, on to Canton High School Mascot Ad Hoc Committee with Member McCoy.
So we had our first meeting tonight, and I would like to thank Mr. Tiskowitz and Mr. Hurd, who are co-chairing this committee for us. They kept it moving along. They had a great agenda. Most everybody on the committee was able to show up. It was kind of a get-to-know-you kind of meeting and go over the meeting norms. Unfortunately, I had to leave a few minutes early because we had a closed session at 6:00, so I'm unclear when we're meeting again. I'm sure Mr. Tiskowitz will let us know, me know. Everybody else was there. But it is a diverse group. We have some really engaged students, and I always love when we have students involved, and looking forward to it.
Our next meeting is next Tuesday at 4:30 in Room 201 at Canton High School.
Excellent. No, this is not a public meeting. This is just a committee meeting.
Okay, and next up, we have Plymouth-Canton Educational Foundation, PCEF, report by Christina Johnson.
We're sharing.
We're blessed.
I'm not Christina Johnson. See that?
Christina had to be out of town today, and it's so nice to see so many friendly faces at the table. It's been a long time since I've been here. I think when Portelli retired. So my job tonight is to let you know about our grant program that we established, and this was our first week of being able to hand out some money, quite a lot of money. So I hope you're happy with the report. This week, we have awarded our largest round of grants to date, nearly $60,000, to teachers across 15 schools. The applicants sent us compelling and innovative ideas. It was so apparent that our teachers have incredible passion. We will be funding projects from instruments and tuners to dissection displays, esports teams, a major refresh of nonfiction books, and so much more. We will be sharing all of the grant projects over the next few weeks. We, excuse me, we hope to keep up the momentum with even more grants later this year because 100% of our funding comes from philanthropic donations. Please help us spread the word and sell tickets to our 10th anniversary of Uncorked, which will happen on April 14th. Time is moving along very quickly. This wine tasting fundraiser will feature live music from our very own high school jazz band, a strolling dinner, silent auction, and many more surprises. Grab your friends and your colleagues. Tickets are available on our new website, and I hope I get this right, wwwmypcef.org. Following Uncorked, we will be launching Thank a Teacher, Salute a Staff campaign. For a small gift to the foundation, your favorite teacher and staff member will be recognized during Nat Turner Appreciation Month in May. More information will be forthcoming about that. It is so nice to be able to come here and report this. I've been very active in this for, ever since I retired, and it makes me sad to come back and think that I don't teach here anymore. It was probably one of the best things that ever happened to me, and I came here in 1962. So it's been a long while. But thank you so much for letting me report, and make sure you give my cowork, that couldn't be here tonight, Christina, a good report, because she will want to know. That was the best decision we made, too. She's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to administrative reports and recommendations. Dr. Merritt?
Thank you very much. And since we only have one board meeting this month, I am going to take my full report to brag on our amazing students and their accomplishments. I know last week, I sent out a press release just talking about the mini-competitions that we had going on, and specifically highlighting our Culinary Arts Program, so I wanted to follow up with their success. Our outstanding team of students added an honor to their program's list of accomplishments when they took state champion honors at the Michigan Pro-Start Culinary Competition in Lansing on March the 5th and the 6th. The team beat out 22 other schools and 300 student chefs from around the state to take the title by serving a three-course, six-plate meal in one hour using only camp stoves and without running water or refrigeration. That is phenomenal. So under the direction of our amazing chef, Diana Woodward, the team will now travel to the National Pro-Start Invitational in Washington, DC. Culinary students also earned second-place honors in restaurant management and the development of healthy and nutritious menus. So so proud of that team. Also shining last week, our Canton Science Olympiad team, they were able to win a regional competition for the first time in 11 years. They are out here rocking. Both Canton Varsity and JV Divisions won their respective divisions at the event, which was held at Wayne State University. That was on March the 4th. And the teams will now advance to the State Science Olympiad competition. In addition to their success, the Canton students, four of them, were selected to win $1,000 from Wayne State University. Phenomenal accomplishments. We're so proud of them. Also, in the world of athletics, our Salem Girl Ba, the Girls Basketball Team, we're wishing them well and good luck as they take the court tonight in the MHSAA State Quarterfinals. Do we have an update on their current score?
We do. At halftime, it's Salem 29, Riverview 23.
So they are winning once again under the direction of Coach Wells. The team captured the school's first girls' basketball regional championship since 1990. That was on last Thursday, when they beat Dexter 40 to 23, and it looks like they're on their way to another victory. The team is on the court right now in their state quarterfinals against Riverview High School. The winner of the game will advance to Michigan State Breslin Center to face West Bloomfield or Flint-Carmen Ainsworth. Tip-off for that semifinal is set for Friday at noon. Lightning Robotics again are just making a name for themselves. We know that we have our award-winning PCEP Lightnings Robotics Team. They kicked off their competition with two strong showings over the last two weeks. We talked at the last meeting about the two robots. Their names are Gridlock and Blackout, and they finished in fifth place out of 34 teams at their opening competition in Indiana, I messed that up last time, from March 3rd to March the 5th. And the students were also recognized for their engineering work at the Indiana competition, taking home the Excellence in Engineering Award. The team followed up with their strong showing in Indiana with a runner-up finish at an event in Lansing last weekend, where they also took home the Engineering Inspiration Award. And it doesn't end there. The team will finish its regular competition season at a tournament in Celine over spring break as they attempt to qualify for state and world champion competitions. So continue to keep good thoughts and positive will in their direction under the direction of Jay Obznik. They continue to shine. East Middle School, you remember our young students from East Middle School, their champ, their chess team? This group of students have gone on their winning share of state cha, I can't speak, state chess championships for the second year in a row. The team were co-champions of the K-12 Chess Division. East students were undefeated in the competition against students from around the state. The team is now set to compete in the national finals this spring. Who would not want to be a part of this amazing district with such incredible students and incredible opportunities? And finally, I want to congratulate our PCEP Quiz Bowl. The teams are putting in strong showings recently as the KLAA League season wrapped up. PCEP JV's, JV's team was crowned KLAA Champions with nine wins and three losses in the competition that resembles a version of the game show Jeopardy played in the schools. The Varsity teams also finished in third place in the KLAA with an eight-win, four-loss record. Again, what other educational opportunity could allow our students such an amazing chance to learn, prepare, and thrive? Every opportunity I get, I will continue to amplify this incredible work our young students do. Just join me in just giving them all the credit. And again, we want to thank our dedicated staff, because without our staff nurturing environments for our students to be successful, we know they would not have such an incredible opportunity to thrive. So thank you to our staff as well. And that is it for me.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Merritt. Okay, we are on to Student Services and Security with Mr. Tiskowitz.
Thank you, Vice President Christensen. As part of our dynamic plan, specifically Strategic Goal B, which states all students and staff will report that they feel physically, psychologically, and emotionally safe and represented at school. Tonight, I would invite to the podium Director of School Safety and Security, Josh Meyer, who will provide the Board of Education with an update on some of the safety and security investments that the district has made and some of the things that we are looking to do in the future. So I'll turn it over to Director Meyer.
Good evening. I'm told I only got eight minutes for what was slated as about a 30-minute presentation, so I'll do my best to muddle our way through it. But I really want to hit some of the highlights tonight and focus on, not, not about what we did, but where we're going. We've done, we've accomplished a lot in the last two years. As soon as this comes up, we'll kind of roll through these slides, but we started out, we built a Security Operations Center that's now become a model for other districts. We've had numerous districts reaching out from across the state wanting to come see our, as a Security Operations Center, see what we're doing, asking questions about how we're accomplishing this, how we're funding it, what does it do, what are the resources of it? And following our continuous, you know, what I set out to do is have a continuous improvement mindset, no matter how good we think we are about making our schools safe and secure, we've always got to strive to find better ways and new ways to do that. So we just implemented two new things that we're pretty proud of in our Security Operations Center. One is an alerting system that anytime there's a lockdown in any one of our buildings, our Security Operations Center will get a real-time notification that there's a lockdown in progress. Those cameras from that school automatically populate. They're highlighted in red boxes, so our operator's then able to relay that real-time information to responding law enforcement and first responders. You can imagine prior to this, if there was an active assailant event or something, some sort of an emergency within our building, we're not able to give that information real time. So now we're able to expedite that. We're able to tell officers what door they can approach to, if it's an ambulance that needed, where they can approach, how they can best access that emergency. The other thing we implemented this, this past week is called Focus of Attention. It's just that, it's designed to focus our attention to something occurring within our buildings. It utilizes our systems to monitor things that are unordinary, whether it's a door that's propped open, whether it's an alarm that's going off, whether it's a car that's showing up in an area that we've told the cameras, we don't want cars in that area, walking past, things of that nature, a whole host of other things. So it alerts our attention to that. We can now, we can then go back, we can address that, we can call, we have it set up by level, so all of our elementary schools are monitored, all of our middle schools are monitored, and all of our high schools are monitored. So if we find a door, we get an alarm to a prop door, we get an alarm, something's unusual, we can notify that school, we can notify our security staff to go address that expeditiously. We're working, we had a surprise visit from Motorola. We're partnering with Motorola to see what we can, how we can further that. We're meeting with them tomorrow to start looking at things like weapons detection. So for example, we know when the incident, the tragic incident occurred at Michigan State, that individual walked in the door, he was observed on camera producing a handgun from his waistband. We're looking at using the artificial intelligence within the system to identify those things, those unordinary things, things that look like a firearm, things that look like something that's dangerous, alert us to it. We can then go back, review the footage, and send, and respond to those incidents a little bit more speedy. So I'm excited about some of the things we're doing. Comprehensive Threat Assessment Guide line, complete update, overhaul of that, staff training, all accomplished this year. We're continuing our active assailant Alice training. Building access controls, continuing to make improvements there. We took, took advantage of the 97 funding through the state of Michigan to do a third-party building assessment. SEC, Secure Education Consultants came in and did assessments of all of our buildings, and we're waiting on that final report to come in, so we can start looking at that, to incorporate that in our list of improvements. Mapping, 97 funds were used to, for Critical Response Group to map out all of our buildings, that's layered approach with grids, so that we can incorporate those in our emergency operation plans and alert first responders, et cetera, where we can put, place them in a building. You can imagine a building like Plymouth High School, I tell, when we had our incident there, we have first responders coming from all over the place. If I tell them to go to CPod, they don't know where CPod is. Now I tell them to go to G6, they look on a map, they find G, they find 6, and they know that's their assigned area. With Superintendent's leadership, we made over $200,000 in radio system upgrades across the district. That's continuing. We're hoping to make Phase III of that next budget cycle, and we got some great improvements where we'll have some interoperability with our first responders and law enforcement on a scene. This is something I'm particularly proud of. Superintendent challenged us after December, our December lockdown to find innovative and creative ways to keep our schools safe. We know that there's some inherent challenges with metal detectors, so we pitched this idea of having a firearms detection, K-9 within our buildings. I just found out on the way here that Echo, our K-9, was certified today in firearms, explosives, and ammunition detection. Later this week, he'll receive, hopefully receive a certification in obedience and support. That's the support component that we're trying to implement within our district as well. So pretty proud of that and pretty proud of what we're doing. It's, so far, it's been a great rollout into our buildings. Echo played a very intricate role in a recent shelter in place at East Middle School. We were able to clear that building in about 35 minutes. That normally probably would have taken us closer to two, two and a half hours to do that, but utilizing our K-9, it was done fast. So that's a lot. So where are we going? I'm happy to report that the state gave us $1.8 million. Although it's a lot of money, it's not enough. I want more, but it's what I got. So we're looking at, some of the projects, we're looking at doing our PA systems. Some of our PA systems in our building are over 60 years old. You can imagine in a crisis, having to go to the old-school PA where you have to go to the principal's office to make an announcement, it's challenging when you're facing crisis and you're trying to do things fast. So we're looking for automated, we're looking for systems that talk with our systems. If I hit a lockdown button, we have an automatic PA announcement that occurs within our buildings. We have automatic relay that information to law enforcement, so that's what we're looking for. Visitor management system, we have policies in place. We're looking to change that, have a visitor management system inside our schools that uses a kiosk. It's going to scan those visitors, it's going to prove them and print off tags based off a database that we've established. So we're going out for bids, I think, later this week on that, on that piece. Emergency management reunification software, including mass communication capabilities. So right now, all of our emergency management plans are paper-based. We're looking to digitize those on a secure server. Reunification is very challenging when you're dealing with 6,000 students, so we're looking at software that's going to aid in that. I'm pretty excited about the company that we're looking at, or a couple of the companies we're looking at, but we'll be going out for bids on that in very near future. But what this also does is it also offers us mass communication capability. So in the event of an emergency, we're able to put out canned messages, we're able to get that out not only to staff but to students. So, you can imagine if you're, again, I'll go back to December ninth, we got a lot of students transitioning in between buildings, they're not able to hear the PA system on a walking path. They can now get an alert that looks like an Amber Alert right to their cellphone. It overrides this volume, so if they have their volume turned down on a mute, overrides their volume, just like an Amber Alert, gives them that notification, run, hide, fight, we're in a lockdown. Pretty cool stuff that we're looking to do that. Also, we know that communicating to our families and our parents during crisis is important, so utilizing those mass communication capabilities to get those messages out to our families quicker was important to Superintendent, important to the district. So, we're making sure that the software part, companies we're partnering with are capable of doing that. Emergency call boxes, we wrote a grant last year for the state of Michigan to put emergency call boxes on our PSEP campus. We were denied. Part of this one-point-eight million dollars will go to put eight emergency call boxes on our PSEP campus. Glass protection treatments, that's our secure vestibular areas, forward-facing areas in the building that are prone to somebody breaking in, breaking glass to to gain access to our buildings. We can't go back, and we can't use school guard glass or things like that. We're looking at that in our bond construction projects, but we're going to use films and other things to protect those glass, protect access and and that to our building. Again, looking at access control, cameras, looking for for additional areas, parking lots, things like that, where we're, where we have security gaps and coverage gaps to make sure that we're addressing those. What's next? That's a lot. We're not giving up, we're not done. We're going to keep pushing forward, we're going to keep mounting forward, we're going to keep finding new and innovative ways to keep our students and our staff safe. So, again, firearm weapon detections, that's important. The sooner we can identify those things entering the buildings, the quicker we can respond to them and keep our schools and our students safe. Mental health programs, probably the most important thing we're going to talk about tonight. We have to do a better job, our country, our school, our state, our communities, we have to do a better job addressing this. That's the first line of defense in addressing some of these situations when you read the reports and you look deep into what's occurring. Technology, again, utilizing technology smart to make sure that we're finding creative ways to make our schools safe. I can't, we can't put, you know, a security officer or a person at every single door, so how can we utilize technology to aid in that? Environmental safety improvements, again, my goal is to, is to, they call schools a soft target, I don't like calling them that, but that's what they're called. We need to find creative ways to to harden up those targets to make our schools safer, but we don't want them looking, we don't want to barbed wire fences, have them looking at a prison. So, what environmental designs can we do? Can we put benches along walking paths? Can we put trees in our areas to break up sightlines? So, we're working hard to find environmental designs and things that we can do to make the outside areas of our schools safer, but yet welcoming and and not so prison-like, I guess. Additional school safety, you know, we're going to continue that communication radio upgrade. Communications is one of the things, when we went back and debriefed some of our incidents, communication is where we needed to improve. We lack communication with responding agencies, we lack communication within our own buildings. So, the radio improvements are fixing that. We put up a repeated multiplex system at the park that repeats and amplifies those radio signals. We are able to put multiplex on there to bring in additional radio frequencies and talk roofs, so that our our officers, we can patch in with, you know, so if if I have a police officer coming in on this radio and ours, and we're on this UHF radio, we're able to patch those together and have interoperable communications during an incident versus siloed and bifurcated communications, really important in those situations. Backup Security Operations Center, Emergency Operations Center off-site. So, one of the things we learned is on that, when we have an incident, that Security Operations Center becomes a hub, it becomes a buzz point. So, if we have a prolonged incident, we need to move people off-site, we need to have a better location. So, we're doing an off-site location. If the emergency is in, it's hard for us to use our Security Operations Center at PSEP, so we have that backup center off-site that we can be up and running in about less than five minutes in the event that we had an emergency. It also has an adjoining room, which would be an Emergency Operations Center where we have, you know, the whoever needs to be in there to monitor the situation, make decisions, especially in a prolonged incident. And then, of course, we want to continue our cooperative relationships with state, local, and federal partners. They they're integral in helping us make some of these decisions and evaluate what we need to do to make our schools safer. So, I think I hit the eight minutes. There's a lot going on.
One of the things that I'd also like to add is, you know, all of this work would not be possible without this, the leadership from Superintendent Merritt, Josh's vision. You know, we have districts that are coming to us, asking us what we're doing. We're leading the way in a lot of areas. Motorola just reached out to us and wanted to do a case study with us on what we're doing, so very proud of the work that Josh and his team is doing. So, I want to commend Josh for his his leadership as well.
Great, thank you. I'm going to open it up to questions over here, starting with Member Westra.
Just one, the call boxes that are outside, are they like similar to what you see on college campuses?
Yeah, they're identical. They're they're made right here in Holland, Michigan, and they're identical to what you would see on on Eastern Michigan campus, Schoolcraft College, they're all, they're identical to that. We are looking at a two-button feature, which would, you know, there'd be an information button, if you will, and then there'd be an emergency button. So, information button would ring into our Security Operations Center. That would be, the reason we're looking at that is because we get a lot of events there on a weekend, people are trying to find a field, they can't find that field, so they're be able to push that information button, ask where the Varsity Stadium is, and it's just, it's just another added thing that we can do to help people that are trying to navigate the complex part there.
Okay. It's a big campus, is eight going to cover it?
It we, it gives us adequate coverage for now. We're looking, as we build additional stadiums and things like that, to incorporate those into bond projects. But again, I I've got three, over three million dollars worth of projects and one-point-eight, so it's prioritizing, it's trying to find out, we're on a very, very tight timeframe to get these projects completed. So, it's trying to leverage, what can we get done now? Prioritize, get the most amount of safety features for the dollar we can spend today. I'm optimistic that the state will continue to provide some additional funding next year and year after, where we can continue to add to that.
Great work, thank you. Thank you. I like the information button on the call boxes, because I know that's been a issue.
Thank you, Josh. Thanks for the presentation and all the extra details that you've brought in. I know that we had been working on getting lockdown kits for all the the high schools. Did those get all deployed to the high school?
I don't have the number. I think we have sixteen, around sixteen, I think, deployed across the district. We're, we still, I have a list, my my old secretary compiled a list of the classrooms. So, what we did is we did occupied classrooms first, or classrooms that were occupied regularly. We got the list from the principals, and those were the ones. So, now we're going back around and trying to find funding to to complete those gaps and and fill in. But yes, they are deployed and currently in classrooms as we speak today.
Okay, great. So, we're all occupied, classrooms are covered then?
As far as, from the information that we got from principals, yes. We we told them to give us all their, their classrooms that are occupied regularly throughout the day, where the list that we got, and those were the lists that we distributed.
And then, we're looking to do classrooms and and other spaces that would not normally be occupied, but might be considered a shelter space.
Correct.
For for students.
There's some elementary, elementary rooms that don't have them, but they have bathrooms within the classroom. So, those were less of a priority than getting a high school classroom that's at a higher likelihood of being in lockdown with no access to a bathroom, no access to anything. So, elementary, we looked at, we look at it a little differently. Some of those classrooms have doors to the outside, where in the event of of an active shooter, they're able to run, they're able to escape from the building. High school doesn't have that option in a lot of classrooms, plus they also have bathrooms attached in the event that they lock down. They still have those facilities where a lot of the high school classrooms do not. So, we tried to, again, tried to use, you know, we got a lot of money from Home Depot, and then the superintendent found us additional money to match that, so we were able to try to get as many as we could.
Great. And then, the last question I had is, I've heard anecdotes, I don't want to say that this is fact, it's anecdotes from people in the community, that we still struggle with rental groups and other people that are in our buildings and either having them have access or not being able to get in to things, you know, propping doors and those kinds of things. What are we doing to address some of those challenges?
So, we continue to work through it?
And are, I'm sorry, are they challenges?
I think it's, I I equate changing the culture in a school district to turning the Titanic around in the Detroit River. We've done things, we've done things the way we have for twenty-plus years. We can't operate in that world any longer. What used to be open schools, doors left unlocked for people to come in, we simply can't do that anymore. People are accustomed to that, to that feature, to that convenience. Unfortunately, when we implement security measures, it's not always convenient. So, we're continuing to try to find new solutions. Again, some of the solutions cost money, money I don't have, so we're trying to continue to find solutions, but there there really isn't any reason anybody should be locked out. We have, we have twenty, almost twenty-four-seven coverage with security that have a cellphone, our SOC is staff, people can call a number. So...
Thank you. And if you do have specific needs on that, make sure that you go through the Budget Transformation process, which we'll be talking about, and those things are brought forward, so that the Board and everybody else is aware of those things, because this is an important activity, and we want to make sure your your support is.
A lot of it is, is really, it's new procedure, so it's following that procedure, making those requests ahead of time, so that we, we can get the doors activated, we can get cards in people's hands, we can get those things. Unfortunately, a lot of people wait till the night before to tell us they need access, and it's not as simple as just pushing a button and giving them access. There's a lot of program that has to go in to make sure that we don't eliminate or or affect schedules that are already in the system. It's not something that we could or should be doing in five minutes.
Got it. And I'm sorry, this actually reminded me of one last thing. We'd had a struggle at the, at Plymouth High School last year with the the marching band and the practice space that was there. I know it wasn't strictly a security problem, but it was practice space in the parking lot and the security implications of that, and the cones and everything else. Are you aware of if we've resolved that 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 challenge?
I don't think you ever resolved the challenge of practicing in a parking lot where vehicles are accustomed to parking. I don't think it's the safest avenue for our band of practice. We're working with the Bond Committee. They have a practice field with a band tower adjacent to the school. It does have some drainage issues during heavy rain, so we're working with the Bond Committee to to try to add some drainage or add even possibly a turf field for them to practice on. Again, I have no enforcement capabilities over motor vehicle traffic, that falls under the Camp Police Department. So, when you put, when you put that amount of students in a parking lot with with sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-old kids driving to basketball practice and such, it's just not the safest thing that we could or should be doing. Unfortunately, I also understand that, under the current conditions, sometimes that's the only place for them to practice. So, we do the best we can, but again, we need to find better solutions and better areas for them to practice.
So, that's, thank you for that clarity. So, given that, I know that some of the things we can do are with respect to policy and the procedures that we do there. So, for example, someone's parking when they're not supposed to be parking there, or accessing a space when they're not supposed to, and then we can revoke those privileges that they get. Has that been effective for us, or are we seeing an improvement in that process? Or is it still as poor as it was when we had the band in here to give us their feedback?
Well, I I I would have a different perception with the, than what the band gave you that evening. I don't think it's as prevalent as they may have indicated it is. Certainly, there's, there's cars that park there. These aren't always students. We have all kinds of community events, we have things that go on. Right now, it's a challenge, because half our parking lot is gone due to the construction. So, when you have a basketball game, you have practices, you have band, you have all these things going on, there is not enough parking for all those activities to occur in one place. Now, when the band takes up the only available parking lot to practice in, all these other events have to find somewhere to park. So, what happens is inevitably, they may get there before the band starts practicing, parking there. These could be grandma, grandpas coming for a basketball game, they could be all kinds of things. We do have a towing agreement with a local tow company, we can tow those vehicles. I'm not sure that that's always the best solution. So, what we try to do is to navigate that and try to deescalate those situations and work so that there's a happy medium for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
One of the other things that they, the marching band was concerned about, was being locked out of the building, you know, after practice, because after they practiced, they couldn't get back in. And so, how does that handled with other sports and activities as they're practicing? They just?
So, the band has never been locked out of the building. They've had access, just like every other athletic group has had access. They wanted a different door than what was normally provided for act, after-school activities and athletics. They have that door, but again, there's procedures in place for notifying us when those things need to happen, and if you wait till the night before your event, or the day of your event to ask for those things, unfortunately, there's not always enough time to get that accomplished. We've reiterated to our building principals the timeliness of these requests, and that I'm, just like everybody else, have a limited number of staff to to accomplish this for twenty-four buildings across the district.
Okay. So, so each activity has a certain door, then, and they go in when they're done and everything?
And all of the athletic directors, APAs, are aware of those doors and the procedures associated with getting additional doors programmed if they need it.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you for this information. I really appreciate the fact that while you want to keep our students secure, you understand that we're also not a prison, because for people who are not in classrooms with students, for every child who sees safety measures and thinks, oh, I feel so good, you have another child then that becomes very worried about what could happen once they see it. So, it's a juggling act, and I appreciate it. And I did want to mention, a couple weeks ago, MASB had a institute, and it was on safety and security in schools, and it was very enlightening, and most of the things, we are ahead of the majority of districts that had been there. So, thank you for all the improvements you've made in your work in this.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so I echo my fellow board member's sentiments, specifically what Member McCoy just mentioned, I wrote down, you know, in terms of still creating that welcoming environment without being fortified. So, you know, when I was first reviewing the presentation before hearing you you present, you had mentioned about the firearms and weapons detection. I'm thinking, okay, are we going to have our fortified entrances with our metal detectors? Is that really something that we want to go for? But so, I really appreciate you breaking that down and what our plan is moving forward. I am interested to hear how the conversations with Motorola go in terms of that AI detection, you know, how, how, you know, are there any false positives, so to speak, alerts of emergencies when it's, you know, maybe someone's flagpole from Winter Guard or something, that sort of thing? So, want to make sure that, you know, we're not causing more issues for for you and staff and students during that. So, that's just a comment, not really a question.
Yeah, there's certainly, there's, there's already software on the market without naming particular vendors, but there inherently, anytime you do this, there's, there's going to be the potential for false positives, and we know that. So, same thing, as smart as our systems are, they may, you know, we can ask it to look for this, and if, and and, and again, it may indicate on a lacrosse stick as a weapon. We're not, we're not telling the system to go into panic when it alerts, that's the whole thing. It's focus of attention. The reason is, is to focus our attention, look and see what it is, verify, validate, and then go into crisis mode if it's necessary. So, we have to be careful on how we implement those things within our, within our district, and that's what we're working with Motorola for. We, as they, as they said on a call on Friday, as were a great test case for them, because not all schools have a Security Operations Center where they're able to monitor that real-time and make those decisions. So, they don't, you don't want to put that software into a system, have it alert, put the school in automatic lockdown, only to find out that what it was alerting on was in a firearm, and now you've created a lot of panic and chaos. So, with that comes that validation part, where we would use the human presence to look at it, validate it, and then determine crisis mode and respond to it, if if in fact it is determined to be a weapon or or look like a weapon.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification. Additionally, I know you mentioned there was a security assessment that was in place, and we're awaiting that report. Do you have an idea of timeline when that report will be ready and essentially that,[1679.88] an idea of timeline when that report will be ready and essentially how that could shape maybe your priorities?
I do. I had a lot of conversation with the company CEO this week. We had done some security assessments. So on my radar, when I took over, was to do our own security assessments of buildings. We had already initiated that process. Most of what they found are things that we already knew about. He said that the draft report should be available in the next couple of weeks. He said it's a very light report that we're doing in his vision out of all the schools. Now, this is a company that works nationwide. He was very happy with what we're doing as a district. And he informed me that one of the schools that's coming to look, he actually sent them to us because he said, hey, you need to go look at what Plymouth Canton's doing and see their system, because they're utilizing the system in a good fashion, and you could really benefit from it. Similar districts, similar size, similar challenges. So I'm optimistic to read the report and see how we can.
Great. I have one more question. You placed some emphasis on mental health supports. I appreciate your thoroughness of this presentation. I think there's a lot of great things that we are doing to keep our students and staffs safe, but I'm wondering if you or Dr. Merritt could expound upon the expansion of the mental health supports.
So that'll actually be another presentation that we bring forward, and as we're fortunate through our state aid to have 109 per student, that's 1.8 million that he referenced, that same investment from the state for mental health services. And so Dr. Liz's department will have a future update as it relates to some of the investments beyond staffing that we're utilizing, programs, and supports for families as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
So this is mainly just outside, people coming in, nothing inside security, like within the building, as far as just students or anything?
In terms of what?
And just, you know, just things happening inside, students and that, or is it just cover everything?
We're all inclusive. We have security measures inside our buildings. We have security measures. You know, in a public meeting, it's hard for me to elaborate on everything we're doing, because I don't want to give our playbook out to somebody who could use it for nefarious reasons. I'm happy to, you know, happy to have further conversation at a later date in closed session where I can elaborate more on some of the things that we're doing. But we are, we are, just for every investment we make on exterior security or securing the perimeters of our building, we're making that same investment on the interior buildings, looking again at technology, all kinds of different things that we're implementing within our buildings to keep students and staff safe.
Okay, is there anything, like, I know bathroom facilities are kind of private. Is that anything, it's kind of a place kids can go?
Do we put cameras in bathrooms?
No, I wouldn't want that. But I just don't, I just find that sometimes some kids can be in there, and I don't know if there's a way of, I guess there's not, but I think a lot of kids avoid that.
I would defer to a closed session to answer those questions. I would not like to answer those in a public session.
Thank you, Director Meyer.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to finance and operations with Ms. Pias. And we have, I'm going to ask for a motion. We have an action item here, number 2303-62, consider approval of a resolution for bid package, high school, HS3 Starkweather Furniture Purchase, final reading. Can I have a motion?
Ms. Vice President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for bid package, HS3 Starkweather Furniture Purchase, action item 2303-62, final reading.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Kehoe and seconded by Member McCoy. This is a final reading. Do we have any discussion?
I could just say, we, at our last meeting, and I had a presentation from TMP, our architects, on the selection of furnishings for HS3 Starkweather Academy. This is for the furniture that will be ordered and delivered this summer. The quoted cost for the phase of this furniture purchase is $424,427.15. The budget was approximately $480,000, resulting in a positive variance of $55,572.85. This was discussed at the FNO meeting and at the last meeting of the Board of Education, and would be purchased with 2020 bond funds.
Great, thank you for that. Since we did discuss it at the last meeting, I am going to call for a vote. So all in favor say yes. Yes. And those opposed say no. Okay, motion passes 5-0. All right, on to action item 2303-63, consider approval of a resolution to purchase a Ford F-150 pickup truck for the maintenance and operations department. This is a first and final reading. Can I get a motion? Or do we, discussion first? I'm sorry, I need a little direction here.
Whatever you'd like.
It can be either way.
Let's do a motion, and then we'll open it up for discussion. Can I please have a motion?
Ms. Vice President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution to purchase a Ford F-150 pickup truck for maintenance and operations department, action item 2303-63, first and final reading.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Kehoe and seconded by Member Westra.
Mr. Welsh is here from our, as a director of operations, to talk about this purchase of a Ford F-150 for the maintenance and operations, first and final reading. Mr. Welsh?
So today, I'm here to ask, sorry, do I ask for just the one vehicle first and then go to the second one?
Yes, two different activities.
Sorry. So today, I'm here to ask for one vehicle for maintenance and operations department. The truck is an F-150 that will replace an older F-250 truck that has extensive wear and tear from the last 13 years. We have reached the point where the cost of repairs has exceeded the value of the truck. The new truck will assist in delivery of items and will also be used as a salt spreader during the winter periods.
It is purchased through the Michigan Contract, consolidated bid, 071B7700180, and this will come from the operations budget and the general fund.
So we discussed this at the FNO meeting on the need for this truck, as well as the timing for this. Normally, we try not to do things as first and final, because we want to have an opportunity to provide feedback as part of that process. But this is a vehicle that's available right now, and it would only be available through the end of this month. And as we only have one meeting in March, we're bringing it forward as a first and final. Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions.
Okay, all right. So I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor say yes. Yes. Those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, bear with me here. On to the next action item, number 23-03-64, consider approval of a resolution to purchase two Ram ProMaster wagons for the maintenance and operations department, first and final reading. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider, Madam Vice President, sorry, we consider approval of a resolution to purchase two Ram ProMaster wagons for the maintenance and operations department, action item 2303-64, first and final reading.
Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Kehoe and seconded by Member Westra.
Mr. Welsh?
The two Ram ProMaster city vans will be additions to our licensed tech fleet. With the struggles of hiring licensed techs over the past few years, we have decided to think outside the box and look toward the grow-your-own model. We have partnered with Local 324 International Union of Operating Engineers to assist in an apprentice program that will allow our current staff to go to school and train to become heating and cooling technicians, carpenters, plumbers, and electricians. We have two current members of our ground staff that have completed the necessary HVAC program and are ready to start the apprentice with us. Within the implementation of the new trade apprentice program, we will be expanding the group by three positions. We will need the additional vehicles in order to accommodate this expansion. The vehicles are available immediately and have been able to, we have been able to real allocate money in our own budget to make this investment this year. These vans will be purchased through the Michigan Contract, number 071B7700180 for municipal and state bidding, from Galliana's Van Dyke Dodge for $32,900 and $33,200, respectively, for a total allocation of $66,108. These vehicles are available immediately and have been able to real, we have been able to reallocate the money in our operations department this budget year.
Much like the other two vehicles, they're available right now and would not be available at the end of the month. And we had a long and extensive conversation this and FNO about the innovative approaches that we're doing to make sure that we can fulfill those skilled trades that we're doing inside the district and not have to outsource some of this work. So we're really excited to be with some of the program and the work that's going on there, as well as how these vehicles can support that. So thank you for sharing all that with us.
Any other questions?
No, just a comment. Good thinking outside the box to get things done.
It's a group project, and Ms. Merritt started it last year or two years ago when we started thinking outside the box, was grow your own. So that's kind of, we kind of took the ball and ran with it as well.
Okay. If there are no other comments or questions, I'm going to call for a vote. Those in favor say yes. Yes. Those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, and I appreciate it.
Okay, we're on to budget community survey results, and this presentation will be done by Treasurer Kehoe.
So I'm going to do the presentation from here, because I'm going back and forth from my notes and the presentation and the survey details. This presentation will be done a little differently than we normally do presentations, because there's a lot of information here as part of this. Oh, thank you so much, Nick. There's a lot of information as part of this, and we want to give an opportunity to provide commentary and feedback as we go, rather than waiting towards the end. So as a reminder for people, we provide this proper, excuse me, we provide this process to solicit input and feedback from the community and from our staff and from our students and our families, on what are the things that they find that are important to them as part of the budget process. And we use that information to identify other suggestions and to be able to help refine the budgetary process and the work that we're doing. Ultimately, this results into the feedback that goes to the administration, and they bring this forward as part of what they call the transformation process, where they work to build a budget that then comes back to the board, which we review. We do a community forum to present that board. This is really the solicitation and input portion of the process. When we did this, we've gathered 51 survey responses. It's a little down from some of the peak years that we've had where we got over 100, but it's about average in terms of what we get as part of this. We had three people that submitted more than one responses, six of them where they actually provided their names. This is not things where people have to provide their names, but if they do, we use that information if we have questions or need to follow up. We had six that came from a student that provided their information. We had 21 total individual people that gave their input as part of the process and provided their contact information. So it's a good community participation as part of this work. 51 overall suggestions, and we group these things into specific areas, athletics and activities, communications and marketing, et cetera. And we'll go through those areas and describe them as we go through this process. Now, you'll see this note down at the bottom of the screen that says the reference number after each suggestion refers to the survey response number. So as we go to the first slide, when we look at this here, it's not that we had six people that wanted us to build a field house, but rather that was response six in that section. So it gives us a way to be able to cross-reference that back to the actual survey data, and when we have questions about that thing, we can say where that is. When there are multiple responses, you will see two numbers that are listed in parentheses after that. So the way we usually run this is we go through each section and then provide an opportunity for feedback as part of that process. And we'll start with the athletics and activities. And the way we try to do this is we describe these activities or the things that we're doing as part of this process, and, you know, based upon some of my knowledge of other activities and things that we're doing, we'll provide some commentary, as well as the administration may provide commentary on these things. The first thing I want to mention is that this budget that we're doing is an operating budget. So this is the operating costs that we have for the district, the salaries, the books, the materials that we purchase. It's generally not about the capital projects. Capital projects are those construction projects that are generally financed through our bond program. So although building a field house may be something of interest to it, it is not part of the budget process here. Now, this particular request was to build a field house to better support our athletics and activities. We have a number of things that are coming up in our athletics process, and there's been great feedback that's been going through that budget activity, but it would not, or I'm sorry, through that planning process for the bonds, but it would not be something that shows up here. The next item on here is basketball hoops at the elementary and middle school. And this is something that's specific to the particular playgrounds that are there. As part of those budget programs, we do, we are refreshing the playgrounds at all the schools that we're redoing. But when there are specific things that might need to be done in a particular school, these are things that can be done in the budget process for that school or be done through fundraisers, through PTO, or other activities in that process. We always have oftentimes conflicting suggestions here. So some people that want to make investments in things and others that say, don't do this. So in this particular case, it's that we didn't need a new stadium, which is one of the things that's being considered and planned for the high school, to provide us a third stadium to support our athletics and activities programs at the park and to support especially our middle school programs that are there. So this is something that, as we went through the bond program, we were very particular about, that we felt that this was necessary to support those activities and provide equity throughout the district. There's also feedback here about improving the district athletic programs overall, and that is absolutely part of the bond program, and you'll see those things happening through the investments that we're making across the next couple of years. There was a suggestion to unify the booster programs that we have across the three high schools, instead of having separate programs for each sport in each school, as a way to try to raise the amount of money that was generated and better distribute that. We will see multiple suggestions around supporting the marching band, and in this particular case, it was increasing the funding and decreasing the dues. This is a presentation that will be coming up in future board discussions, where we actually were going to originally discuss this. Judy spoke about this from the Student Performance and Achievement Committee, and there'll be a lot of discussion that we'll have around this topic in this area. And the last one is improving the facilities and support for robotics by providing a practice field and storage space. And this is something that's actually included as part of the work that we're doing for the Phase III renovation, whether it would be a fully dedicated space or whether it's providing that space for them is one of the things that's being planned in that process. So I will pause here for questions for board members or feedback from the administration.
When they were talking about the facilities, I think it's important for the community to remember that when Central Middle School was decommissioned, we lost a pool, and we also lost a track that we're supporting our middle school students. And so they didn't have enough facilities to support their athletic programs. And our middle school administrators were very collaborative in deciding what was best for all kids during the bond process. And the decision was that if you put those things at the park, they would be centrally located, and they would support the middle school kids as well as alleviating some of the crowding for the high school students.
On the unified booster club, is that really a budget item, or would that be more of a policy?
It's a great question. It's predominantly more of a policy question, but the topic there is very much germane to the conversations that we are having around equity for funding for athletics and activities throughout the district.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
So we'll move on to the next session, communications and marketing. There was a desire to invest more in our broadcast and media center, to really make it so that we can take all the great programs that we offer around broadcast, radio station, media, et cetera, and to be able to consolidate those into one building to better offer, to offer a more comprehensive program around the communications and marketing activities that we do around media and publishing. There was a discussion to suggest to cut the LPT3 YouTube podcast, and, you know, when we look at these activities, we see multi modes that are necessary for us to communicate with the community, and we always look at how we're getting adoption as part of these things to see whether they're appropriate for us to continue. And then lastly, on this section was stop paying for surveys. The suggestion was not to eliminate surveys, but to look at other options that might be able to be lower cost as part of the surveys in this process.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. The next section here is around the DEI, or diversity, equity, and inclusion, work to provide more special education services for kids age three to five. And this is something, as we heard from Representative Colasar earlier, that this is an area that the state is definitely looking to make investments in those students of those ages. And as that process were to happen, we would look to be able to do that from a special education perspective as well. We're also looking at how we can better support those students from that process right now with our student and family engagement programs. To invest in a multicultural center facility to accommodate cultural and ethnic clubs and to highlight different cultures. So this very much relates to some of the work that we're doing in serving our different athletics and activities programs and how we can support those things across the district. And this will be one of the topics that we'll be talking about actually after this presentation. And then, of course, always the counter argument, eliminate DEI spending as a whole. So I think there is continued ones on this, so I'll continue with these. The next one that we have here is getting rid of the TAG program or its transportation costs and return Gallimore back to a general education elementary school. We have done a lot of work as a district to make sure that we can provide more diversity in the, I'm sorry, more differentiation in the school district and to better support our advanced educational opportunities throughout the schools. But we've seen that our magnet program with respect to TAG has been an opportunity to bring in people from outside the district and really support those students that need that additional activities as part of that. And the transportation, as we've heard today, is that the, our Mary Beth Carroll Extra Myler Award that came out today was specifically for transportation for the Gallimore students. So it is something that is well-respected and well-deserved throughout the district. The last one was adding an administrative role for addressing and managing law-focused discipline and behavior intervention programs. And this is one that I'm not as specifically familiar with this. Maybe Ms. Merritt, you or someone else could weigh in on this particular one?
Looks like from the notation that they were referring to someone who could assist with restorative practices and training for staff, is what it.
Okay. And that's stuff that we've made a lot of investments in, and certainly something you would consider as part of the process. So I'll pause here on this section to see if there's any other questions or feedback.
Questions?
Can you turn to the first screen, just so that we can reread them?
Absolutely.
Okay, we can go back to the next screen. We can go back to the next screen.
Okay. Okay. I'll move on to the next one. Food and nutrition services, free breakfast and lunch for all students. This was the first thing, so as soon as the survey was open, this submission was done about an hour afterwards. So this is obviously something that's a hot button for somebody in this process. And we heard from Representative Colasar that this is absolutely something that the governor and the state legislature are considering as part of the budget process to better support our students and make sure that people are well-fed in their school environment. Questions on that one?
Would there be an opt-in and opt-out for that, or does it just hand food to everybody?
So I think as, I think as your question came up, I think that the mechanics of the program would be something that would be considered when it comes up. We certainly don't want to be wasting food, as Representative Colasar was saying.
So I actually work in a school that provides breakfast and lunch to all students. And so the procedure is students, when they enter the building, if they want to eat breakfast, they go and get a breakfast. And then at lunchtime, it is they go through the line to get their food like anybody else would. It's different than the pandemic with the grab and go, because they would be eating in the buildings.
Got it. So there probably would have to be some work that we do around planning and scheduling for that, so you've got some idea of what the demand is? Because if you're making, if you're making food for people, you want that to be available for them and not have people run out, but you also don't want to make so much extra that's wasted. So I think that if, assuming that program comes through from the state, there'll be a lot of work to plan and figure out how to implement that in the most effective way.
Thank you.
Okay. The next one here is on human resources. Focus on keeping our excellent staff with better teacher and paraprofessional compensation. Always something that's important for us to make sure that we're supporting our staff as part of the process. The board does not negotiate the salaries. That's something that's done at the administrative level. The board ultimately approves those things, but this is absolutely something that will go into the budget process and the work that they're doing there. With respect to the paraprofessionals, the board did approve, based upon a recommendation from the administration, to do an increase for those paraprofessionals, as well as, I believe, a bonus or retention bonus that we did for them. And that actually was very effective in helping us to reduce some of our paraprofessional shortages that we had. So this is something that we very much have made investments in as part of that process, and I'm sure that the administration will be continuing that as part of their budget planning and negotiation process. Mental health coordinator at each school and reinstating the coordinator position. Ms. Merritt, can you provide some context around the fine arts coordinator, because I know we discussed that in the past?
Yes. So previously, we had a dedicated visual and performance art, performing arts coordinator. Over lean years, that was a position that was reduced, and that position then was combined with our math curriculum coordinator. And so there has been conversation around the district to look at that cut and maybe reinstate that. And so then that person would be focused really on the alignment of our K-12 program that would really have eyes on our visual and performing arts, as opposed to having that with, you know, with another person. And you're looking at the curricular program, you're looking at materials, and just oversight of that K-12.
So that would be for K-12?
That would be quite K-12, that's correct.
Okay.
Questions?
I had a question on the mental health, and this is probably better questions for the presentation that would be coming up, but just is that also an opt-in, opt-out? Like if somebody needed, the school felt somebody needed mental health, is that something that they would first contact a parent before doing any interventions?
So I'm not quite sure on the, from the community, what was referencing here, but looking at the comments, it looks like just additional supports that would be there. Right now, we have a team that really supports the district, and it looks like this recommendation is to try to have somebody there at each building level.
So that, yes, probably when you do the better question then. Okay, thank you.
And the next section we have here is maintenance and custodial. This specific, very specific question at Gallimore to have wood chips instead of sand that is present at the playground there. As part of the bond programs, we redo, generally redo all the playgrounds that are there, but there's maintenance activities that can be part of that process. If you're a family or a teacher or a community member is part of this and you see that there's a problem there, please let your principal know, and they can work to get these kinds of problems addressed. You know, this isn't something necessarily has to be done at the bond level or even something that has to be considered from the budget process. There are things that can be just part of the normal maintenance process that we can raise those issues as part of that. The next one is updating and remodeling the bathrooms and fixtures at Canton High School, specifically Phase Three. This is, Canton High School Phase Three is part of the redo that we're evaluating for the bond program, and it will be part of that, it wouldn't be part of our normal budget process. Conversation around replacing towels with hand dryers, timed faucets to reduce water usage. You know, there's definitely think work that's been going on in the district around this perspective, but certainly is something that we can consider as part of that process there. Hiring cleaning crew and skilled trades for appropriate wages, much as we see with all wages throughout the district, there's a lot of pressures in those areas. The work that Mr. Welch talked about specifically on our skilled trades was designed to help address some of those things with our Grow Your Own and the Apprentices Program as part of that process. The East Middle School gym and cafeteria upgrade. East Middle School has not yet come up on the bond project. I believe it is next up after the Phase Three addition, so it'll be a next-year project that's part of that process, and we'll be looking to make some of these kinds of additions in that activity. This next one here around, I'm sorry, yeah, just making sure I advanced to the right slide, sorry. Next one is investing, or investing in fixing cracks in ceilings and walls to eliminate pests. There was a very specific feedback here about mice and rats and bugs that were coming through cracks in the walls, and we would, again, it was, this, I believe, came from a student. If you're seeing these problems, if you're hearing them as part of your family, if you're a teacher at the school, you see these things, please let the maintenance team know about this. They will address those problems immediately. They're not things that we need to have as an investment from a bond perspective or part of the budget. They're normal maintenance activities, and they'd be included in what we do. Questions on this area for maintenance and custodial?
Just a comment on the last one. I have been one of those parents that's pointed out things that have gotten maintained, and they deserve service.
Okay. Good. That's what I want to hear. If they're not getting serviced, we obviously want to know about this.
Not necessarily cracked, but I'm just saying, I pointed out things that needed to be fixed.
We'll move on to the next section here, safety and security. And this is very timely, given the presentation that we just heard from Mr. Meyer. The first one here is separating the schools with the basic programming in each schools to eliminate net, I'm sorry, this is specifically about the high schools, the three schools on campus. And the ask was to separate each of the high schools and to provide the same programming at all the schools. The ask was to continue the same diversity of programs that we had across all three schools, but to do them at each individual school and to eliminate the traveling between schools as part of that process to try to increase safety. You know, we're a unique facility in having those three schools on one campus, and one of the ways that we're able to offer the diversity of programs that we have is because of that economies of scale that we get across those schools. This has worked really well for us, and Director Meyer has done an amazing job of making sure that we're supporting the activities and the work that we do from a safety and security perspective as part of that process, and that'll continue to be done. The one that we get almost every time, the enclosed pathways and the covered walkways and awnings for passing between the high schools, you know, this comes up very often that people want to do this as part of this process. There is definitely something that, as a former student of the high school, I would appreciate and understand this, but I recognize as the finance person that this is not going to happen from an economical perspective. But it is certainly always a welcome suggestion as part of this feedback, and we noticed that there were two people that suggested this particular thing. Invest in emergency messaging platform at PSEP. And we heard from Dr., I'm sorry, Director Myers, that this is actually something that's already in, on the way right now with the work that we're doing and the investments that are happening in that process. And then lastly, adding a pedestrian bridge over Joy Road. There is people that live on the other side of Joy Road, and they have to walk down to McLumpha to make that crossing, to do it safely, and they're asking for a pedestrian bridge over there. This is not something that the district would do. It is something that would have to be done through Wayne County. So it is, as we've seen with like putting the stoplight in at McLumpha and Ann Arbor Road, Wayne County has been able to respond to some of those concerns, but I don't anticipate this being high on their priority list right now, but we will certainly pass that suggestion on to them. Questions on safety and security? Student family engagement, having a resource center to serve low-income families. Dr. Vertanian Gibbs, is this something that we specifically are doing, or how? I know that this is kind of part of the work that your team is doing right now.
Sure. So how it works is that families are referred to us, and we provide resources. And anything that someone asks us for, we do anything we can to try to support the family and provide them what they need.
That's great. And I know that I've spoken to a number of educators myself throughout the district, and they said that that program and the work that you've done has just been instrumental in helping to support the students that they have in their school buildings. So it was just a conversation I had last weekend, so.
Great, thank you.
Passing that feedback on.
Thank you.
Questions on student and family engagement? The next section is teaching and learning, and we've broken this up into two places. What content is taught, the curriculum? And there's feedback here on a strong phonics and phonetics program for K through 12, and we see some other questions as related to this as it comes through. And I know that there's work going on from the administration on that front. When we get to the next question, I'll have them weigh in on that particular. A desire to expand our foreign language programs offering at the middle and the elementary schools, and in particular, the waitlist that has to occur for seventh-grade students at the middle schools in order to take Spanish or another language there, and the desire to have more foreign language offerings there, the waitlist and lottery that's there. So that's something, there's, seems like there's an interest and a demand there that we haven't been able to fully satisfy. Providing social and emotional learning for all students and staff, so this is an investment in those SEL programs and to continue to make those investments. A class to help students learn to produce music electronically. So this is, this particular suggestion was split from two, because it was kind of combined two suggestions into one. So this was recognizing the history of southeastern Michigan, specifically Detroit, on electronic music and how that could be part of our curriculum and the process. I think, yes, we have some more on curriculum. So the next one is social skills education for high school students, so to help address them in that process, improving the variety of music that's available to music students, specifically the sheet music and the library materials for all students, and then increasing the inclusive sex education and LGBTQ supports. So these are the items that are up on the curriculum section. Any feedback from the administration or from questions from board members?
You noted about the elementary literacy program, so those, yeah, you want to wait till, you want to wait till it hits here?
I was going to hit on the next one there, because there's a whole slew of people that weighed in on that one.
Now, isn't SEL offered for everybody already now? Or is that like a?
Yes.
Okay. And there's an opt-out for that one, too? So like, don't have, not required? Okay.
How would, how would social skills education differ from SEL?
I'm not sure what the survey respondent was expressing in that survey, so I'm, you know, I'd need a little more information to speak.
Teaching high school, high schoolers topics like emotional intelligence, helping them how to build a positive relationship, or important topics, helping them to gain confidence, learn to relate better to others, and build connections with the right teaching style, so that kind of thing. So it is very much aligned to the SEL programs that we're doing already.
That's correct.
The next section here is teaching and learning and instruction. This is how the content is taught, and that's the separation between the curriculum and the instruction. More funding to marching band and other music programs. This is, again, one of the topics that we'll have coming up in our review of our activities and athletics programs and how we fund those things to be able to address some of the equities or inequities that we have. Restoring the one full-time interventionist to each elementary school. And Ms. Merritt, I wasn't quite sure on this particular one. I think this was, we made some adjustments in the way we provided our services for people as part of this last year. Do you want to just speak to that a little bit?
Yep, I can speak to that. So at the end of last year, those of you who are on the board would remember, perhaps remember this, and the community will probably remember this, we did a deep dive over the last few years on the data around our literacy intervention program. We were spending 3.8, or $3.82 million on the program, 23.45 FTE for the interventionists, 679 students were supplied intervention cost of $4,800 per student. And our results, our results were not showing the improvement that we were looking for. So what we did was we recrafted that funding to better be more equitable based on the needs of the building, which led to district and building-based instructional coaches, learning support, paraprofessionals in the kindergarten classrooms, 10 FTE of interventionists across the elementary based on needs in the building, and 14 FTE for TOSA's teachers on special assignment for student academic support. So that would, as we implemented that this first year, as we continue through that process, we'll be looking at the data for that to see how that compares to the data from our previous intervention program.
Great, thank you. And that's, I think, directly related to the next suggestion here of eliminating the instructional coaches and the reading interventionist to put more resources back in the classroom. And for us, we see that it is not an either-or, that we want to put resources in the classroom as well as support those additional supports. More funding for Career Center for college and military visits, more textbooks available for students. This is somebody that specifically was concerned about the electronic books that were there and that some students learned better from physical books than from electronic books as part of that process. And then the big topic that we had the most number of suggestions on, this was the K-2 literacy training and science for reading for all Tier One teachers. So, Ms. Rail, I think you.
Yeah, I'll take care of this one. So as has been indicated to the board and also to several community members, the K-2, the early elementary literacy program is in the curriculum cycle at the present time. What we did was we accelerated the curriculum cycle portion for phonics and phonemic awareness with a recognition that we needed to strengthen that area. So this year, we've piloted programs around phonics instruction, structured phonics instruction. And as we look to the fall, we'll be looking at rolling that out and doing additional training and support for all of our staff as that moves forward, for both the K-2 staff and also then the 3.5 as we roll on as well.
Great. And just for those of you that are in the audience or watching at home, we normally have a five-year curriculum cycle where we review all of our curriculum and revise it every five years. By accelerating that, we're able to take a shorter period of time to do that review. So thank you for that update. And then the last one is musical instrument reconditioning, improving the quality of music education. So there's two basic themes here. One of the things that we specifically have, need to do a better job of communicating to our staff throughout the district, if they have needs to get their musical instruments redone, there is money available in the budget already to support that process. So we encourage them to bring forward those requests so that we make sure that people aren't suffering with broken or outdated musical instruments. Questions in this area?
So tonight, the park had their college night?
Yeah.
Which, with their little college fair, which is where Ms. Doo is.
Exactly. Then moving on to the next section here, this is a very creative one from the transportation perspective. So not covered walkways, a mini tram at the high school campus. You know, I see, you know, maybe buying the People Mover from the city of Detroit or something like that, you know, to help people move around the campus. Moving 6,000 kids through a mini tram, that would be a big challenge, but, in 10 minutes. But, you know, it's, we always get some great suggestions that come through as part of this process, and we welcome those as part of this. The next one here from transportation is definitely one that is important for us. This is adding buses for after-school programming. One of the things that we consider as a challenge for us is whether it be academic supports or whether it be athletics and activities. or whether it be athletics and activities, how do we provide equity for our students that may not have that after-school transportation options? And this will be one of the things that we'll look to discuss when we have that broad conversation around athletics and activities. But I know that you've also been looking, the administration's also been looking at how to provide those supports today. And do, I can't remember, do we do some of this right now? We, I know that there'd been some discussion.
Right now, our challenge is actually the drivers and transportation.
Right. So we have plenty of buses. We are struggling with our drivers there. We made some great strides this year in terms of not having the massive amount of canceled routes, but we're still struggling with the number of drivers that we have.
And we're always hiring, so just like Mr. Fishstix, you too can be a bus driver in our district, please.
Absolutely.
And our students love our bus drivers, so.
It's an incredibly rewarding job. So that, any questions on the transportation? Okay.
Just thinking about how we could volunteer to be on autonomous vehicle testing site at the park so that.
So at the park instead of the mini tram?
Instead of the mini tram.
I, well, we're set up for pedestrians right now, not, you know, maybe we put a subway in, so.
I'm pretty sure they don't want people, they don't want cars doing passing lanes.
Yeah, so we can talk to, maybe we can talk to Elon Musk and he can do a tunnel and through his boring company there. We can, exactly, we have a hyperloop there. Okay. So the last section we wanted to talk about is a reminder of the timelines that we have. We are reviewing the survey results and we worked through the budget assumptions at the last F and O meeting. Those budget assumption presentation is, is that?
That's all right, so it would be the next meeting.
It's the next meeting, yes. So I believe that the next Board of Education meeting, I believe it's in April.
11th.
April 11th is the, is the budget assumptions presentation that we do at that time. And then from there, we go into budget transformation. This is throughout the district, all the leaders go through all the feedback and input that they've heard here, additional feedback that they've heard from families and staff throughout the year, what they think is important as part of our dynamic plan and the work that we're doing, and that goes through the budget setting process. There's always some very difficult choices and challenges. We heard that from Director Meyer today. $3 million worth of security improvements these want to do, $1.8 million in funding, so difficult choices and ranking those choices as part of that process. From there, we go through the initial budget review that we start in F and O, we have a budget presentation to the Board of Education on May 9th, we do a, a public hearing for that on June 13th, we have a final budget discussion at, on, at the F and O on June 22nd, and then a final vote on this, but before the statutory deadline of June 30th on the last meeting of June, in the last meeting of the school year, on June 27th. I know we've, we went through those items as we went. Any additional discussion or comments or feedback? So I definitely want to thank the community members, the staff members, the students that all submitted their suggestions. We make light of some of the ones like the tram only because of the, the budget constraints that would not allow us to do something like that. You know, if we could, we probably would, but it might be lower on our priority list. But that, that input is really important to us as a board and as part of the administration in helping us to set the budget and understand those priorities. So thanks, everybody, for that, that process.
I do want to point out, you know, we adopt our budget June 30, right? That's our, our deadline, and I know we've said it in many other presentations, including our Money Matters presentation, as well as you even asked our state rep, Matt Colizar, about, about their budget process. So they operate on a different calendar, they, they have to adopt their budget by, what, September 30th? So it starts October 1st. So oftentimes through the, throughout the year, we have to actually amend our budget to match their budget. So that's also part of this timeline, just beyond the budget adoption.
Okay.
Okay, on to teaching and learning with Ms. Rail.
So tonight, for, for your awareness, we have a first reading of a materials purchase for advanced placement, also known as AP Biology. And so this was talked about at our last SPA meeting. AP courses, just for historical purposes, allow students to study college-level courses during high school. The college board determines the curriculum and gives us a choice of materials, a limited choice of materials that we can use to provide that curriculum. So the materials usually have a choice of around three to five different options for textbooks, and so tonight, what we're doing is bringing forward the one that was vetted and recommended by the team who looked at and kind of piloted this, got feedback from students. Just a little bit of awareness about AP Bio, AP Biology. It's a course that's designed to support students in various areas of science, but especially draws students who are seeking careers in engineering, chemistry, biology, and other related fields. We have approximately 100 students currently enrolled in the course, and as you look at our recommendation, our recommendation will be to purchase the text and digital licenses and all materials, 150. This would allow students to also take a book home if they chose to. I have, for your pleasure, a copy of this book. So you'll note that AP Bio and AP courses are pretty beefy courses. They also allow our students to perform well on the AP Bio exam, specifically to earn up to four college credits. So total cost for this book, the 12th edition, AP Campbell Biology and all related resources would be $29,565. And I have Dr. Brady, Dr. DeRadey, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development here as well for any additional questions, but I'll just open it up to any questions you might have and answer any questions. We did vet this at SPA and talked about it extensively there.
Sure. All questions on the right?
Glad you brought that textbook. Now I understand the need for the electronics.
Yep. The one thing we would, we provide with this too and work through as we do these requests whenever possible is also to provide a digital license to an electronic copy of the textbook. So we would have a six-year, even though it's a five-year cycle, as Treasurer Keough mentioned, we do a five-year curriculum cycle, but we usually get a six-year digital license whenever possible, just to provide that additional time as we work through the process, so. And also, the AP sets the timeline for when the courses, the course, new course materials come. So this fall, this coming fall, if we don't adopt the new textbook, we'd actually be out of compliance with AP standard, or AP requirements for this course.
Just to, just to work, we covered this extensively in SPA, so it was good discussion.
It's a little light reading for night.
What's the, I'm sorry, what's the, the publication date of this one? I know that is, because I know we've struggled sometimes is that the AP only gives us a limited number of books, but then sometimes we end up with books that are near their end of life.
Yep. I'm going to ask Vice President Christiansen to tell us. It should be the copyright date in the middle.
So we have copyright of '20 to '21.
'21.
Okay, so it's relatively recent.
Thank you for that.
I have it open to that page. So I was curious myself. Do you mind passing this brick over to Treasurer Keough? It's heavy, it's hefty. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to citizens' comments, and I do have a few here. Oops, pardon me. Okay, I am going to start with Beth Savalox, Savalo, I apologize if I'm not saying that properly.
Hi, Beth Savalox, 628 South Evergreen, Plymouth. So I am a resident, I am a retired teacher and administrator, and as I look around this room, my whole past is here. I taught Diane's kids. Nick and I did Learn, Prepare, Thrive. My daughter was supposed to be in the PSEUP picture, but she skipped school that day.
Oh, gosh.
My sister had that sign commissioned, "It's all for the children," when I sat on this side of the table and we were facing some really tough redistricting things, and it's like just a good reminder that it's about our kids. So I am here today with a message of appreciation and hope, and my appreciation is to everyone sitting here for the career that I had. It was an amazing ride, and the appreciation for my kids who are now in their late twenties and thriving, mechanical engineer and an occupational therapist, thanks to all the work of everyone. So my message of hope is rooted in some really hard data, and that is on the reading scores of our children. Of course, I have handouts because I'm a teacher. And since I've retired, I've had the privilege of focusing on the things that matter most to me, and that's equity and literacy. Our scores are dismal. 41% of our black students do not meet third-grade reading standards, 41% of our Hispanic, 45% of our ELL, 40% of our economically disadvantaged. This is hard data. And I have to tell you that when I read the, the governor's report of the post-pandemic, this is not unique to Plymouth, Gannon. This is the state of Michigan, and that's frightening, and I cried. I cried when I read that data because it is a reading crisis. And so when you compare the data of Michigan to other states like Mississippi, who's number one, you're like, why Michigan? What's going on in Michigan? And this is part of my message of hope for you is, well, first, it's more bad data. On page two, I have for you a chart that ranks Michigan colleges and their approach to teaching reading. We are 36 out of 50 in the country. We have zero colleges that address all five areas of reading comprehension, and zero colleges that rank as superior. This has been for 40 years. And what this means for 40 years is any teacher that graduated from any Michigan college does not know how to teach reading, and that includes me. I was an English teacher in our district. I was not taught, oh, was that my three-minute already? Okay, I'm going to go faster. We just weren't taught. And so as you do your budget assumptions and as you pilot a program, don't forget our teachers. They need to be trained. They've never been trained. Even our K-2 teachers have not been trained in phonemic awareness and phonics. We are asking them to do something new, and we can see from our data that it needs to be done. Any good program is going to have a training component, it's going to have materials, it's going to have curriculum, and it's going to have time built in the day for teachers to set aside this dedicated time. And here's my message of hope. First of all, I have been through this training. I'm a high school history teacher, and I told my husband, "I've reached the end of my road, I can't help teachers teach reading." He said, "Go learn." And I said, "What do you mean, 'go learn'? I'm old, I'm not going to go learn." He said, "Go learn." So six months ago, I've taken the two classes to teach reading, and I can tell you, I can sit down with a fourth grader now and I can figure out, oh, their vowel blends are off. They don't know what short vowel and long vowel. They can't break up a multi-syllabic word. I could not do this six months ago. And what I can promise any teacher in our district, if I can learn it, they can learn it. My other message of hope comes from the fact that I am now a coach in Detroit, and I work with second through fifth grade, and they can do it. They can. I'm at, the school that I'm at right now is the first year of the phonics program, and I was sitting across from the third and fourth grade teacher today, and I said, "Okay, tell me your data." Third grade teacher, 26 kids. One kid, when they walked in at the beginning of the year, was an independent reader, one. It is March. Only one child is not an independent reader. Fourth grade teacher, same results. I said, "Okay, what's going on?" They said, "phonics and training." Phonics and training. These are teachers who've been teaching for 20 years, it is 100% free and reduced lunch, it can be done. But as you do your budget assumptions, do not forget the teachers. Build in money to pay them for the training, to pay for the training, so our kids can fulfill your dynamic plan, which is that we are a leader in this state and that all of our kids can read. So thank you for giving me extra time. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Owen.
I don't think Owen's actually here anymore.
Okay.
It's Owen Shimshack. Or, I'm sorry. Shimshack, Owen Shimshack. Sorry.
And lastly, we have Scott Mylan.
Good evening, hello, everyone. I am Scott Mylan. I am instructional coach, at least in this moment. I reached out to some of the teachers within the science department that I coach, and then eventually to the three high schools. What I wanted to share with you today is about the surveys. I wanted to share three things that I've been getting feedback from teachers about surveys with you. The first one is that the survey frequency is very high. So I'd come in thinking that there was six and seven surveys started today for March. At the meeting, I noticed I missed one. So we're on our eighth survey so far this month that some student or some teacher is getting in the district. And I think that the disconnect between different departments and different levels doing surveying, that we're underestimating the kind of toll that that's taking. The second thing I would feedback is that I think teachers and students both feel that a lot of the survey questions don't really capture their sentiments. It's hard, there's a large number of a lot of survey questions on the surveys that we're taking. And then third, that I know, because I come to meetings and see you guys work, that you guys go through and sit through data and you use the stuff that you do, but the teachers and students do not feel that they see policy action from surveys. And so I brought three suggestions for things that I think would help improve the facilitation of surveys, because there are a lot of teachers who express gratitude, that they like that you're reaching out to get information from them. It's feeling a little overwhelming at the moment, I guess is what I'm trying to say. First thing would be, it would be helpful to set up intervals, either fall, winter, or fall, winter, spring, if we need that for some of the district initiatives, but all the surveys that are going to happen up until this point need to be in by this point, and then on September 30th, we're having the fall surveys going out. Along with that, I think, reducing the number of questions on each survey. What do we really need to know? What are we really going to act on, or is this a filler? And trying to cut back on some of the length of some of the things. And then, and then third, I think would be really helpful if you guys were to write, "Here's what we did from the last, uh, surveys on the surveys." I think the students would see more buy-in, teachers would get more buy-in if they heard the feedback that you guys have, but right now, there's a little disconnect. I got over 100 responses from teachers. Two things I would share, the sentiments of them, is that it's challenging to teach right now, there's a lot, it's very exhausting, and there's a lot of things going on. And when teachers are given surveys that say, "Are you doing this? Are you doing this? Are you doing this? Are you doing this?" And then they see that seven times in a year, that it feels very interrogative, it feels very evaluative, and almost punitive, like I'm watching you. And so that's the sentiment that a lot of teachers are sharing. And the second one I would say is that there's, there's a right way and there's a wrong way to get information from large groups of children, and that's a difficult balance. But I think that the teacher sentiment would be that right now, there's, there's a level of disconnect between what would be most optimal for how do we get information from students that is not based on their perception but based on their reality. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our citizens' comments. Now we're on to discussion. We have the equity and athletics and activities discussion, and I actually want to ask Treasurer Keough, could you give a little summary of this prior to?
Sure. So I'd asked for this data, and it was processed through the Student Performance and Achievement Committee, and then it was set up to have us do that as a committee of the whole, so it gave us a chance to review that before it came to the full board. The basic ask was to have better data and understanding of how we were funding, supporting, running our athletics and activities programs throughout the district, and specifically to see whether we have some challenges with respect to some of the, the equity that we do to those, those programs. And our athletics and activities, the principals, assistant principals, assistant principals of athletics and activities at the, at the park endeavored to gather the information to support this conversation. It is a lot of work, and there's a lot of data that we asked for because we wanted to know what is the know what is the, the, the funding level that they have? What are the staffing levels that they have? How many students are participating? How much money is being asked from parents to participate? What is the, the external support programs, like the booster clubs, et cetera, as part of that process? And to do that across all three traditional high schools as well as across the activities programs. And the, ultimately, our intention is to do this across the district, but we were starting at the park in this, this process. And when they pulled the information together on the last SPA meeting at the beginning of the month, one of the things that we quickly realized is, is that the information was very imperfect. We saw massive differences between how the information was gathered and how it was reported from each schools, to the, the point that at some point, one school had a third of the spending reported against the other schools in the process, which, you know, there certainly is gonna be some differences, but it wouldn't be that one has got $600,000 and the other has $200,000. So, the way we gathered the data and the consistency that we have there made it so that it really wasn't fully useful for us. And we had a very robust discussion on that process at Student Performance and Achievement. And one of the things that we wanted to bring forward here in this meeting was to understand what we as board members want out of that conversation and whether, how we would use that information and the data. Because it doesn't make sense for us to gather information and send people off on, on a big data gathering process unless we have some purpose and some activity that we're gonna use that for and how we're going to consider that, that is part of the, the programs and the activities. I know that Judy, I think you were there at that meeting, as was Patty and Cheryl. Anything else to add?
I just have a lot of additional questions. Because I think that over the years, how the budgets are even come up with, it's, it's been, I believe, mostly, this is what we did last year and so that is, you know, we, it's not codified and or memorialized in any one document, like what, what we pay for, what we don't pay for. And I think that we, there's a lot of work before we have a discussion about the data because we need to really make sure we have the data we want.
Yes.
First.
Yeah, and it needs to be consistently applied across all the categories that we're gathering. You know, for example, I think the conversation we had is, is, if I remember correctly, it's $2.8 million that is used to fund our athletics and activities, is that? And unfortunately, the numbers that we got that added up, added up to like 1.2.
1.6.
Or 1.6, there we go.
For sports.
First.
And then 75.5 for activities and band.
Yeah, exactly. So, it was not, it was not reflective of the money that we're actually spending from a budget perspective, so we didn't really have a full picture in terms of what we're doing. And, you know, to Patty's point, one of the things that has come up for us before is we have these traditional sports that are fully funded and then these others that are considered club. What's the reason? What's the basis for that? How do we consider whether that is a fair and equitable process? Some sports may require more money than others, but, you know, why do we choose baseball over lacrosse or women's field hockey? You know, what's the process that's used? And, you know, the basic conversation that we had in that discussion was, that's the way we've always done it. And so we wanna open up the opportunity to say, that isn't the way we always have to do it. And our original intention was, we wanted to do this for this budget cycle. When we looked at the data and we saw everything that was involved, we realized, there's no way that this is gonna happen for this budget cycle. But this is work that we can start now and be prepared for next budget cycle. And hopefully, we don't have to wait all the way till next year to do that, but we can start having those conversations.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Part of the problem, I think, is because we're comparing sports with activities and there's quite a difference. I copied all the, the clubs and activities and even under them, you have affiliate clubs and you have student initiated, initiated activities. So, you have, and then you have clubs with prerequisites. So, and some of the clubs may get resources from out, you know, from different community things. So, do we consider those as part of, like, so we say football brings in, and sports bring in money because people come to see it. So, they provide a lot for what they spend, they do provide a lot. So, if we're gonna be spreading that money out, are we gonna spread out all the money the clubs bring in, to be fair? So, like if one club brings in all this money from, let's say Ford Motor Company or something, will that money then have to go into a pot also? Because, and then there's some clubs that some kids would not be able to be a part because they're affiliates, do we just cross those off the list? Because like the S, the horse one, I can't say it.
Westry.
Thank you, X Westry. Like, that one's an affiliate. So, like, how many students actually participate in that? Is that also thrown into the pot? So, it's like comparing apples and oranges. For like athletics, you have the M H, M H S A A and you have requirements, like you have to physically be able to do it. Some clubs, you, you don't, you can just attend.
Can I interject?
So, yeah.
So, I think that's probably the next layer of discussion. I think today, the purpose of today's open discussion is, what data do we wanna see so that we can kinda compare the athletics funding to maybe some of those activity fundings and, and how they do differ, so.
Yeah, 'cause I was just gonna say too, like also the drama club brings in money too from their ticket.
Right.
So, is that get thrown in?
So, I think at this point, we, we don't necessarily have all of that information. I know that there was a spreadsheet that was shared with the board that, that has a framework of that, but today, we really wanna, we wanna ask the administration, we wanna have that discussion about, you know, what do we wanna see as a board in order to have that next layer of conversation after, after the presentation?
That's kinda what I was asking. I was asking, what I'd like to see is like, what's the, what do they bring in? Those, then we're asking the sports.
Absolutely, sure. I mean, the intention was actually all of those programs, we wanted to see what was the spend that we had? What were the receipts that happened? What were the outside funding that occurred? So, we could actually look at those things in, in a holistic way. You know, it wasn't specifically to draw any specific conclusions or to create any policy changes, but to, to be able to at least review that and see whether we do have an opportunity, a chance to perhaps make bigger investments. You know, our district makes a relatively small percentage of our budget money that goes towards athletics and activities compared to some other districts. Or maybe we have a redistribution of that, that money based upon different criteria. And I don't know what that criteria would be, it's a conversation that we would have. But I think you have to start with, what are, what are people getting? What is their need? How much money is coming out from families? You know, what are families being asked to pay? What outside groups support as part of this, this process? What gate receipts do you get? You know, I will tell you, for not any of the programs that we have, our gate receipts, whether it be theater, whether it be football, whether it be anything, they never make up more than those programs cost. They all are a drop in the bucket compared to what those programs cost. It, it, they're, they're certainly nice and people feel important as part of that process and they help offset the cost, but they're never a moneymaker. Unlike college football or, or anything like that that are true moneymakers, these are not moneymakers for us.
Member Westry, I wanted to say something.
So, I think we're, I think we're not being fair in asking for this data, because I think we as a board have not defined, why are we doing sports as a board, right? And I wrote some notes here. To me, school sports and activities are about building healthy connections, building healthy habits, character building, all of that. They're not about raising money. Maybe they, you know, maybe a side benefit is they promote the school because we have a super football team or whatever, or, you know, great robotics team, right? They help build, you know, some of these sports help students, many, all these sports and activities help students after they get out of school. But I think, in some respects, gathering all this data this year may not be, we may not get the results that we want. I think what we need to do is define among the board, number one, what are the things that we require to be a school-funded sport? What's the path to becoming a school-funded sport and staying a school-funded sport, right? Just because we've always funded football, does it mean that we have to fund football in the future, right? Maybe now lacrosse is more popular and maybe we ought to be giving the money that we used to give to, and I'm not, I'm not saying defund football. You don't, you don't, excuse me, I have some example.
Sure.
Right? But maybe we're saying this sport that we used to call a school-funded sport is now popular. And some of the things I was thinking about are, we need to provide a standard application process to a sport, a path to becoming a, a school-funded sport, right? Right now, it's just this, we've always, we've never funded lacrosse, so we're not gonna fund lacrosse.
And we, yeah, we don't know how we have decided those.
I, I certainly don't.
Board members, I apologize, but can you please get on your mics?
I'm sorry.
We're not picking up a lot of this.
Okay.
Well, some of the lacrosse, like it started out as a club sport because they, they're, there's process to become like an M H or M S H A support, so.
But do we fund M S H A sports?
Not all of them, no.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
But, but, but like, at one time, it used to be all three lacrosse teams for the, it was a park thing, so it was a club sport. Then enough participation to separate it into three different schools. And sometimes that goes up, the amount that are playing and sometimes it goes down, but there's like a process, I believe, that to get that, depending on some of the criteria that I don't, I don't know.
We don't believe that there is a process.
To be, instead of being a club sport.
Yeah, there, I don't, we don't believe that there is a process. I mean, if there is, it's never, when we've asked the question before, it was, no, this is the sport that we do and this is the way we've historically done it. So, I think, to your point, it's important for us to, to, to understand what that process is, but I think that's jumping to a conclusion before we even understand where, where we're at right now.
But we know how much we spend on sports right now, right?
No.
No.
No, we know how much we spend on sports and activities. We don't know how much we spend specifically on sports.
Okay.
So, we, and we don't know for which sports we spend what money on.
Sir, I would correct us on that. What you saw was, what came through a spreadsheet with coaches, for example, they didn't, they had coaches that were funded, but not our teacher, let's say the three-band director. So, there's a discrepancy in what they reported because the coaches filled out a sheet, but we absolutely know from a budget perspective how much is allocated. So, that's what you get.
By, by athletics, activities and each of those athletics and activities?
So, part of the reporting process of the annual audit is to report on athletic and activities. So, we only know what we know, though. We don't know all of it, because some of the funding comes from booster clubs and that's not part of our books and records of the school district.
And is it broken down between athletics and activities? They're separate?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't realize that, so thank you.
And that was gonna be my other comment, is I know other districts in this area that have a unified booster club that supports all sports or all sports and activities. And I really think that as a policy, we need to consider something like that, right? Whether it's some percentage of the booster club goes to a general pot, you know, 50% goes to the general pot and 50% goes to the other, to the sport, or whether everything goes into, whether we have one booster club, right? And I know that's a major change for a lot of people.
Yeah, I, I agree that those can be part of the solution. My, my question is, what's the process today? You know, if we, we can certainly, I think, as Ms. Piaz just mentioned, is we can split out activities and athletics, but we don't know about how activities and athle, the individual activities and athletics are funded. I don't think we have that broken down, do we? Ms. Piaz?
Those that are reported through the school district are broken down. Now, an APAA is one person and their, that person's salary is broken down by sport or activities, but the individual supplies or the individual coaching or the individual edu-staff invoices for those coaches that are paid through edu-staff versus the staff coach are included in the general ledger under specific sports.
Okay.
Can I, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
That we somehow take our questions that we all have and we provide them in a written form, so that Dr. Merritt is not trying to capture these questions right now.
That's fair.
And we send them in and then President Wilson and Vice President Christensen can get with Dr. Merritt and kind of go through these questions and then maybe say, this is reasonable, we can do this, this is not re. Because some of these questions that we have may not be reasonable or may not be something that we could answer, so that we could even see what we're looking for, especially since we have tonight, we have members who are not here, who would like to weigh in on this. And we, you know, it's 9:25 and if we're just asking questions, we could send those in one spot, because I feel like some of my questions I have on my paper are questions that you both have already asked and they could be collated together.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion.
Can I just make a comment without a question?
Sure.
Oh, I just think if you combine, I think there, that would be something you need to really consider if you combine the booster clubs, since the parents, it's usually done by parents and they're usually focused on supplying the things that their children need with that specific group as a way to help their budget. And so, there's also the risk that if it's a combined thing, they, you may have less participation possibly or motivation in that sense. That's just something to consider, is because there's a lot of effort put into the booster and like for the banquets and everything and, and that would limit a lot of things that maybe some people might, you know, for their, for their specific child. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things within each program that's done to help kids that can't afford things, so.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that. And if we can, I want, I want this to be time-bound too, so if we can get our questions, comments to Member Wilson, or, excuse me, President Wilson, myself and Dr. Merritt, let's, let's give it one week, perhaps? If you can give, next Tuesday, have that to us?
Next week, next one, Wednesday, is that?
Tuesday, next week, one week from today.
One week from today, okay.
Okay?
Excellent.
And I believe that concludes our agenda here, so we are going, oh, no.
Follow-up board questions.
Oh, shoot, darn it, I missed that. Okay, you're right, follow-up board questions, thank you. I was really worried about it being before 9:30.
You can, you can do it.
Yeah, yes.
All right, we had a follow-up board question. Members Sedu spoke about previously viewed birth rate presentation. I supplied what we had in board notes, but I put the question, does this satisfy? Or, so we had what we did for plant maram and that was an earlier study, I think the information that we had went through, was it 2020, 2018? So, just, I, I didn't hear back from anyone.
Right.
I think we can assume it's there, but maybe ask the question at the next board meeting, because Ms. Sedu is not here right now.
Right, I think that's fair.
And that was it? That we had a follow-up.
Before we adjourn though, we might have some breaking news about the basketball game.
Oh.
Oh, do we?
Am I breaking the news?
Sure.
The Salem Rocks have won and they're on to the state semifinals.
All right. Good job.
That is great news.
What was the score?
Fifty-five, fifty-two, it was a very close game. There were a couple, a couple of big free throws at the end and Salem pulled it out.
Nice.
Great job.
Thank you for that update. Okay, and that concludes our meeting. We will adjourn at 9:28 PM. Thank you.
All right.
Next job.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Brandon. You seemed to do well, too. Congratulations.
They did, thank you, thank you for playing well. Turn around.
That's so interesting. I love these boxes. But I keep making notes. I thought, is it rich? I thought it was rich. Yeah. Oh. That's what I heard.